Board members, as you know, last Friday night was graduation and we graduated 525 students across the stage at Panther Stadium. And our communications team is there to kind of record it all. And this is a video that they put together earlier this week.
Graduates, on a personal note, as you culminate your high school experience, you've gained much knowledge and much skill. However, I want to remind you of a few other important things that you've learned along the way. I think you have discovered that the seven wonders of the world are actually to see, to hear, to touch, to taste, to feel, to laugh, and to love. I think you've sensed an experience that the virtues of respect and responsibility can change the culture of the community for the better. We hope you've realized the value of dreaming big. As many of you shared with me, those dreams are coming true. As you reminisce over the past four years, I hope you realize that it is often the little things that make the big things happen.
Congratulations, class of 2025. We did it!
Board, I think you'll agree, that was just a magical evening last Friday night. 525 kids came across the stage and in their futures and every one of the staff members across this district helped them get there. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but it was a great evening. So that's just a way we wanted to celebrate it with you and the rest of our community tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. On to...
Math program review. Dr. Barr comes to the podium. I remind the board that a couple of weeks ago, we included the math program review in your board update. Dr. Barr and her team have been looking through that, have been debriefed on that review, have set a plan for moving forward, and wants to present to you tonight the results of that review, as well as the next steps that we're looking forward to next year, as well as the following year. So, Dr. Barr.
Yeah, we're going to give a short review because I knew you didn't want to read all 98 pages of the report, but if you need help sleeping some night, let me know. I can help you out. Basically, we're looking at, we partnered with West Ed. They had submitted a bid and we liked their process the best. And so when they came in, they did 17 focus groups with district leaders, teachers, and students, some of those virtual and some of those in person. They did 110 classroom observations over the course of four days in January when they were here. They did 174 math surveys administered to math educators, and that is K through 12. And then they also did a review of instructional materials and curriculum documents. So it was several months that it took this process to be done, but they were very good and very thorough. We were very pleased with their process and how they conducted themselves. There were six overarching recommendations that they made. They recommended that we begin to focus more on integrating academic conversation throughout the instruction, so having kids talk math with each other more often. They recommended that we increase the rigor and cognitive complexity of math instruction. And they do believe that a lot of what we focus on is just the process, but we should really make a turn and focus more on the math behind the math. It's kind of what we call it, like the conceptual understanding of math, instead of just memorization of equations. Differentiate some instructional practices in Tier One, because students are all in different places, so focusing more on getting different things for different kids. Deepening math pedagogy through professional learning, particularly at the elementary. Elementary teachers are not trained to the depth that secondary teachers are in math. I believe most elementary programs have them take one class. And so that is just a challenge for districts across the nation, in all honesty, and increasing that pedagogy and understanding. Renew a focus on our vertical articulation and teacher collaboration, and then adopting a district-wide curriculum management system, or just a way that we're housing the curriculum. Overall strengths that they found in our buildings, they said there was a strong culture of learning in our buildings. They found little to no off-task behavior. They repeated that over and over again, how amazed they were at how on task our kids were. A really strong fidelity to the district resource at K-5. Again, we have a really strong resource there, and I think that brings comfort to a lot of our teachers at the elementary level in the area of math. Students do definitely have a strong sense that their teachers care about them and want them to learn, which is honestly a really great thing to see. We can, you know, we can fix curriculum, we can get documents going, we can do all that, but that is something that is priceless, I believe, in our buildings. Again, deepening that math pedagogy through professional learning and the desire among teachers to collaborate. They really want more collaboration time. That is going to be more challenging in the upcoming year, now that our calendar changes, thanks to our legislature, but we still have a plan on how we can make that happen. Specific elementary findings, as they did divide it up between elementary and secondary, there is a heavy use of direct instruction, so the teacher directing a majority of the instruction with a limited opportunity for students to talk math. And so that is, again, going back to that academic conversations, having kids talking to each other about math, more so than the teacher talking to the students about math. Eureka Math, which is our elementary resource, does have a strong alignment to the Missouri Learning Standards, and we did know that. Our assessment and evaluation criteria show some inconsistency, and so some of that's when there's been some personalization that's been happening, so we kind of need to go back and tighten that up. And our depth of knowledge is typically a Level 2. So when you're looking at depth of knowledge, there's usually four levels, one being the lowest, four being the highest, and so most of our questions, they found at the elementary level, were two. And the differentiation is a challenge. And honestly, differentiation is going to be a challenge across the board. When you're in a classroom with 20 to 30 kids, that is going to be a challenge. Also, there is some concerns with the engagement level of Eureka. Some teachers expressed that it was very workbook worksheet-heavy, and so looking at how we can look at that and change that. That instruction is, again, focused on process and procedure, instead of a deeper understanding. And teachers are not familiar with the mathematical standards practices from the National Council of Teachers of Math, or NCTM. So what is the National Council of Mathematics, Mathematical Practices? I thought I'd give you a brief crash course on that. They have several, and so one is to have students have goals that guide their instruction. So students setting goals in where they want to be in math, based on where they know where they are and how they can grow. They want to have us in our math classrooms have tasks that have multiple entry points and a varied solution, so not just the one solution and not just the one way to get to the solution. So having kids think creatively about how they're getting to the right answer. Using connect mathematical representations, and so that's like your diagrams, your graphs, your number lines, doing a lot more of that kind of math, because in all honesty, that's the kind of math a lot of us honestly do in the real world. I don't do a lot of quadratic formula. I do a lot of graphs, diagrams, looking at things like that, as well as a lot of us do. Facilitating, again, that mathematical discourse, and then analyzing and comparing approaches. So again, like with number two, having kids look at different ways to solve it, and then number four, how do they talk about that with each other? Posing purposeful questions that really get students reasoning, so instead of just always giving them easy answers, but getting them to think through it. Having procedural fluency to conceptual understanding, so going beyond just being able to plug and play numbers into a formula, to really understanding why the math works that way. Having students really grapple with ideas and relationships in math, so productive struggle, really letting them struggle and try to find their way to the right answers. And then elicit and use evidence of student thinking, evidence that is beyond always just an assessment. But how else can our students show their learning? So that's like, again, a crash course in what our national math group thinks that we should be moving towards in math classrooms. Two very specific elementary recommendations is revise those model assessments, so again, just take another look at them, tighten them up, it's been a hot minute since we've done that, and then engage elementary teachers in math-specific professional learning, to kind of give them some more background that they didn't get in their formal university training. Secondary findings, nearly all instruction was teacher-centered and student conversation was limited, so also reflective of what we saw in elementary. Again, that instruction was very focused on procedure, so plug and playing into the equations, and had low depth of knowledge, so a depth of knowledge of one or two and not a higher application of it. Big Ideas has mixed alignment to the standards, which we did know that as well. Was not as much of an opportunity for resources to be aligned to our standards, six or seven years ago, when we adopted the resource. And in general, again, lack of differentiation at that Tier One level. There we do have some lack of coherence in vertically-aligned curriculum, and so I do know that that's probably happened since post-COVID. That kind of led us off a little ways, and so it's just kind of exacerbated just a little bit. And again, those mathematical practices are not being put into place. Three very specific secondary recommendations was to relook at our resource and see are there things out there, there are more standards aligned. Develop that vertical and horizontal curriculum coherence, so we're doing the same things horizontally and we're building vertically. And then increasing that student engagement, that ownership of learning and the mathematical thinking with kids. So our areas of focus, short term and long term. Short term is to continue to work towards curriculum document and assessment alignment, so really good, doing a deep dive into what we have on paper and making sure that we're tightening it up, which will lead to that vertical and horizontal alignment of instruction and assessment. Looking at evidence-based resources, seeing what is out there, particularly at the secondary level, and then enhancing that teacher pedagogy, so that they could be able to either, again, understand the math behind the math, differentiate, give them some more tools in the toolbox. Long-term goals are focuses to enhance Tier One and Tier Two interventions, after we kind of get our Tier One more figured out. Restructuring the third year of math offering at the high school level. Not every kid needs Algebra II as their third year of math. If you're college-bound, you should, absolutely, and go beyond that probably. But what if you're not? I think we've discovered a lot, especially like through our LEED programming, where we do embedded math, and we're doing math that really applies to electrical, math that really applies to HVAC. Having a broader view of what kind of math really could we offer to kids who maybe aren't on that traditional college-bound track, or who are on a college-bound track, but maybe are going into a different kind of math. So for instance, a student who's going into business or finance, it's a very different math that they might need, so exploring those options. Changing math narratives. Everybody says that they're not good at math, and everybody's okay with that, and changing that narrative and saying, no, we can all be good at math, and we just need to find our way there. And then integrating math with other disciplines in a more project-based manner. So those are bigger, loftier goals, those are going to take a longer time than just a one-year. But in speaking about, in the next upcoming year, we did draft a series of goals for next year. The first one is to strengthen those instructional practices at Tier One, to increase student engagement, ownership of learning. We are going to look at teacher survey results regarding our professional learning opportunities that we do with them, walk-through data, where we're going to see, okay, this is what you, you know, went to and learned about, and then how do we need to support you to do it in the classrooms? Student perception surveys, we're going to start with a baseline in the fall to see where students are in that engagement and ownership of learning in math, and do it again in the spring, and then see if we've made any growth. That will probably be an ongoing thing that we do from year to year to year, because as we're in, and changing up pedagogy and how we do things, we should see a gradual increase in that engagement and ownership. And then the last one will be baseline data regarding student achievement will be last year's data, we'll begin to look at growth in that area as well. Our second goal is to improve vertical and horizontal alignment in our K-12 curriculum and assessments. And so we believe by the end of next year, we will be able to have 75% of the K-12 curriculum documents housed in a common curriculum management tool. Our vertical alignment, K-6, yeah, will be 100% complete, K-6. Grades K-5 will have 100% of their common assessments complete, so again, that tightening up, we will have that done. And then a minimum of two common assessments per unit will be completed, starting with the sixth grade. And our goal three is adoption of evidence-based resources that align to district standards. We are going to put together a committee of math teachers and look through the different resources that are out there that are aligned to our standards and are evidence-based. We want 80% agreement by our teachers on what is necessary in a new resource, 80% agreement on a resource to adopt, and then a significant alignment to district standards. Our progress and our goals are going to be tracked throughout the year, and with a mid-year analysis of data, that'll obviously be through our NWEA and also through some of our common assessments that we will have. And then the goals for '26, '27 are going to be adjusted to reflect progress, based on how far we got on our current goals. Questions?
You kind of touched on it there, just at the end. So how does our NWEA really integrate with what they were saying?
So overall, you know, the standards that they're looking at and what they're testing on, yes. Sometimes the timing of it, maybe not. And so that is going to be a struggle with any testing resource that we have, is that you're never going to find one unless you specifically design it for you, for it's specifically designed to match 100%. But it does give us valuable data that we can definitely take action on.
It sounds, if I understood it correctly, that there's two needs on the elementary level, maybe more in the science of math, because I know my undergrad, I had one class. And so if you're not kind of leaning towards math, you need help with that. And maybe in the secondary, in the art of instructing math, which are two very different approaches. You noted there was a need for some staff professional development. Do we have something? I would just want to avoid having a one, those are two different needs.
Those are very different needs. And you explained it actually perfectly, like one is the science, one is the art. And so we would not be putting them through the same professional learning series. We do have a consultant that we started to work with on curriculum. We've also, who can work with us on both ends of that, but we've also heavily invested with Casey White, our instructional math coach at the secondary level, heavily invested in her professional development this year with building Thinking Classrooms, which has that discourse and has that productive struggle. That's really kind of caught fire in a lot of our classrooms, but it's still new, but investing in her to be able to coach up our secondary teachers.
How will we be able to do that with the schedule the way it is next year?
Yeah, so we do have limited days to offer professional learning, obviously. We will be taking advantage of those. Also, when we did shorten the student day for next year by 15 minutes, depending on where that minutes are, depends where they are at elementary, it's at the beginning and secondary is at the end, but the teacher contract time is still the same. And so we are going to use some of that time for professional learning, collaboration, things like that. Not five days a week for every teacher, but maybe Mondays it's math and Tuesdays it's social studies, and so we will vary it, but we are going to gather some time that way.
You hear nationally that math scores are going down. I mean, do you find that to be true in our district?
Actually, our last NWEA, I've been crunching those numbers, K-8, no, they're not going down. But I do think we need to take a hard look at how we teach math. I do think that a lot of times, it is just plug and play, and then that's when kids run into problems, because they don't really understand the why behind it, and that's why a lot of kids hit a wall in Algebra I or Geometry or Algebra II, because they just have surface-level understanding, but they don't have any deeper understanding. And so I would liken it to, you know, I know the sounds of the alphabet, but I don't really know how to put the words together. Like, that's kind of where I think we are in math. I know the procedure, but I don't understand why that works or that happens. And I do think, again, that's not just a RPEC thing, I think that's a national issue on how we teach math. Honestly, in America, we teach math in a way that nobody else teaches it. It's probably time for us to accept that that's not working.
I mean, it just seems with technology, you just plug in the numbers and it does it for you. I mean, is that one of the reasons that, you know, kids aren't taking time to figure things out?
I definitely think technology's not in our favor in that issue. Now, on the other hand, I think there's some really great possibilities with AI, where if, you know, if we're the kid engaging in that productive struggle, they could have their AI chatbot tutor who's not going to give them the answer, because I've tried, but will continue to ask questions and continue to push your thinking. I think we can leverage some technology in a good way, but I also just think the fact that we all carry calculators around with us on a regular basis hasn't helped us.
Do you still carry a calculator?
Dr. Barr, what's the name of the elementary math program we use?
Eureka.
No, just as a substitute. When I would try to teach Eureka to the kids, it's very scripted on what the teacher has to say and do, and so I can see where it doesn't allow a lot of time for there to be conversation between kids. You know, it was very, very rigid, I thought, and very structured on what they had to follow each day, and so...
It is. I think some of that is the resource recognizing that, again, teachers don't have that math background, and so giving them a way for not to, you know, screw it up. However, I do think there's opportunities through collaboration that people can discuss on how they could incorporate more talk-in turn or more just purposeful kinds of things. And I think with, if we grow their confidence better in the pedagogy, you know, the pedagogy and the math behind the math, I think that they would be more free to do that. So we are going to work on that. But it is, yes, it is scripted, and I think it is for a very purposeful reason.
All right, any other questions?
Just do a wrap-up thought here. This is the second year we've done a program review, and these things can feel kind of threatening, you know, uncomfortable, but I want to commend Dr. Barr and the team. You know, they've embraced that uncomfortable feeling, because it also gives us an opportunity to ask questions and have some light shine where we're not actively looking on some of our areas to be improved upon. And they've attacked it with the spirit of how can we get better, you know, what do we need to do? I also want to caution the board, this is not a one-year fix. You know, this is a long haul. We have noticed that our math scores have been stagnant over time, and want to figure out how we can continue to move those and get better. So this is not a quick fix, this is a long haul, but the steps we're going to take next year, we're going to reevaluate them in a year and create a plan for moving forward on this. So do appreciate your support, and really for the support on actually having the program review in the first place. So thank you for that.
All right, Dr. Barr.
Me again, my next one?
Yep.
Okay, entrepreneur class. So I know a lot of times when I'm up here talking about different cool things we have at LEED Center, I am also challenged in a good way, usually by Deanna, about, you know, what are we going to do at the high school? And so I wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about something that we are doing at the high school. We are starting a new entrepreneurship course. It is a pilot. It is going to really focus on creating that entrepreneurial mindset. It is not in competition with LEED, because we also do entrepreneurship there, but it is designed for kids who maybe don't want to donate half of their day to the LEED Center or can't, but still really want to, you know, flex their creativity in a positive way. And so that's kind of one of the whys that we're doing it. It is going to be team taught by one of our business teachers, Shelby Jessup, and then one of our English teachers, Haley Thompson. And so the kids will be getting business and English credit that we will be combining. They'll share the kids for two hours of time, do again, allow some flexibility. And so sometimes if the English teacher needs them for two hours that day, they'll get them, and maybe the next day, the business teacher will get them for two hours. But kind of breaking down that bell system and allowing for some flexibility. So the great thing about entrepreneurship is that it focuses a lot on these skills that we're going to need nowadays. I know there's a big fear of, you know, what's going to happen now with AI. Well, even with AI and jobs, there are still some things that we need humans to do, and this will really focus on that, that problem-solving, that critical thinking. With a lot of new things, we are focusing on public speaking, because that is definitely something that we know kids struggle with, but we also know when we take them through appropriate, you know, programs or experiences, that it gets a thousand times better. Also focusing on teamwork, and then definitely resilience. Anybody who's tried to be an entrepreneur or read about it knows that you usually fail many more times than you succeed, and so learning that fail forward, and then how do you bounce back by that? So again, our design is a combined course. We are partnering with a company called Uncharted Learning and the Kaufman Foundation to incorporate their Incubator Ed curriculum. This is a curriculum that's been used in other high schools across the nation. The high school that it originated in, some of the students have actually been on the real Shark Tank and really had their endeavors funded. And so they really do a great job about immersive training for teachers. So we are sending our two teachers, as well as one of our high school admin, to their trainings, because they have teacher training, where the teachers get to live the curriculum, and they also have leadership training on how do you support those teachers as they go through this coursework. And so they have a customizable curriculum. You could just plug and play, or you can also build and grow upon it. And then they also have regular on-demand coaching or one-on-one consultations. The first coaching will actually happen either later this month or the beginning of June, where they actually have a teacher who's taught this course talk with our teachers ahead of the training, to try to give them a better sense for what's going to happen in the training and how the curriculum really works. And they do eight areas of focus, which you can see right up there. Ideation, customer discovery, customer connections, finances, which is a big part of it, and how do you get somebody to finance your great idea? Building your minimal viable product, and so that is what they call your idea. What is your minimal viable product that you can try to sell? Getting that legal expertise, promotion, and then how to pitch their story. There is growth possibilities with this. Not only do we hope this takes off, so we'll be offering maybe at some point more than one section of it, but Incubator Ed is also in the process next year of piloting a ninth and 10th grade curriculum that would prep kids for this course. So currently, what we have at the ninth grade, we have a business class where Travis Conley kind of gives the kids a Shark Tank experience. They have to get into teams, they have to create a product. Many of us sit as Sharks. I did some serious investing last week in a couple, investing in a couple ideas. So our idea is the kids could take that at ninth grade, if their pilot that they're doing really takes off and goes well next year, we would, the following year, adopt their 10th grade curriculum, and then this is our capstone curriculum at 11 and 12. If that all goes well, they do also have some elementary and middle school options. So we are just kind of sorting our way through, like what is going to fit for this. The reason we're really wanting to do it this year especially is because Kaufman, at this point, partners with us and pays for half the onboarding costs and all the teacher training and travel. So it is a great opportunity at this point to kind of jump on that ship. There is a couple schools in the Kansas City area who have used them. Ruskin, in particular, I've heard speak about it, and they've been very pleased with not only the curriculum, but the kids' response, and then definitely the support and training that they've had. Any questions?
I think this sounds exciting. I can't wait to see how it goes.
Yeah, me too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Sligel.
Yes, so the customer assessment survey, we just recently completed for the third consecutive year. Dr. Volker is going to give you the highlights of some very good news tonight about how our parents and guardians and customers are feeling about our district.
Good evening, everyone. I would like the board to know, we're still waiting on Dr. Barr's investment check for that Shark Tank. I hope to see that come across finance desk very soon, but I'm not holding my breath. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our community survey results. I really think feedback is the key to improvement, continually seeking feedback, and that's what we do each year with this survey. So looking at this, it was conducted in April by phone and over 400 registered voters, 400 registered voters. So that's a large sample size, gives you that statistical significance that you're looking for, includes current, past, and non-parents. It's got a score, that Likert scale, with five being the highest, and statistically significant changes from '24 are shaded in the overall results, but we're going to talk about them tonight. So looking at some of the academic and staff strengths, the quality of education went to a 4.18 from a 4.05. Improvement in the caring by staff for our students, that's a pretty significant jump there, and that's exciting to see. Student safety, as that is a topic that we've talked about a lot, and we're continuing to talk about, and I think our community's seeing that, and the improvements that we continue to make. And our support for student differences is up as well. So these are all very positive. We saw very positive results from our survey this year, which is just exciting. So our facilities and our sense of belonging, our school facilities, considerable rise. Think about that as a five-point scale, and you're getting a 4.55 from 400 respondents. That is a pretty incredible result, and it shows the commitment of our staff and our Board of Education to have the highest-quality facilities for our students, and that's a great thing, so we really appreciate you on that. Our community and cooperation also up, and students feeling like they belong. It's one of our strategic plans, and we've been working on it, and we know we have a goal for 2027, but that we have goals along the way. So as you see that rise, and you see our community note that our students feel like they belong, makes us feel really good about our efforts and our work there. Mental health and behavior, something that we work on and talk about quite a bit. Mental health... Mental health supports was up considerably. Positive behavior efforts also up and anti-bullying efforts. That's one that we've talked about for a number of years, that we've wanted to rise and continue to talk about the committee about the efforts. We still have room for improvement, a 3.41. That's a significant growth, but there's still room for improvement in that area. And we're committed to doing that. Engagement and communication. So looking at responsiveness to concerns, inclusive in decision-making, communication quality, emergency communication, sharing success stories. If you look at all the things that our communications department has done and our buildings have done to talk about what we are doing and the great things that we're doing for our kids. And then the new program information has also risen. Lot of growth areas. Hope, I think I skipped one. And then community sentiment. So 97% of our, our community members agree that strong schools help property values. They know the commitment to our school districts helps them as well. And it is cyclical. I'm all working together. So strong schools are extremely important. And that's held steady for a number of our years, and our community has consistently demonstrated that they support us and we support their students in that effort. And it really is that cyclical, cyclical approach. So some final takeaways. All our statistically significant changes were positive. Satisfaction is rising in almost all areas, in fact, in all areas. And our anti-bullying and engagement increases are significant. We want to continue to see those grow, but we, we had significant growth this year, so that's exciting. Happy to answer any questions about our community survey.
So where's a, a key area that we could focus on that needs some improvement?
I still think, I'll go back to the bullying. I still think that's an area that we need to continue to focus on. When you're talking about working with youth and, and the growth and development, let's just use middle school, for example. When you're talking about the growth and development of an 11, 12, and 13-year-old, you're always going to be asking, what can we continue to do to build that sense of belonging in their school community, responsibility, accountability, and those key growth indicators and measures that lead them to be successful people? We're not going to get to stop that, ladies and gentlemen. That's something that we will do for the rest of our careers. So I think that's just an area we need to continue to work on.
Board, you need to be very proud of these results. These were, when we looked at them initially, I thought there was a mistake because every one of them went up. There's only one indicator of the 20 that we track annually that decreased, but it didn't decrease by statistically significant amount. It just decreased. When you have a, the first question that the survey company asks our respondents is what, how would you rate the overall quality of education in the Raypack School District? So that is a cold first, out-of-the-gate question from everyone that responded. And when it's a 4.18, I believe it was.
4.18, yes.
4.18. That tells you most people are saying fours and fives, and more people are saying fives and fours, right? And because a couple of people will probably do a three or two for whatever reason, but get that back up there at 4.18, that's a lot of people thinking that what we're doing is a good job. What, where this is most significant is, is in a couple of weeks, I'll be talking to our principals and assistant principals in a year-end meeting. And there are days when it feels really heavy about some of the issues that you deal with and some of the, you know, opportunities we have to interact with parents and students around topics that are intention or in conflict. Have results like this at the end of the year. Survey is taken in April where it's a 4.18 overall, and every other indicator went up, many by statistically significant amounts, is a testament to the year that we've had. And so I'm proud of this team. I'm proud of our teachers and everyone in this district for getting us to this point and being able to present these survey results to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to the legislative update. Dr. Sligle.
Absolutely. This may not be as cheery as the customer assessment survey, but I wanted to give the board an update of where we're at legislatively because the session came to an end about a week ago. The bills have been sent to the governor. The governor has yet to sign. Two bills, things I'm going to be talking about tonight. But did want to let you know where we are at and some of the things that we are getting ready to do. First of all, I want to talk about budget. And this is a document that's on your, on your, the attachments on your screen. If not, we will also email this to you tomorrow so you can get a copy of it. The foundation formula is fully funded at 4.28 billion across the state. Now, this is $300 million more than the increase of the governor's recommendation back in the State of the State address in January. So this is what that means. Earlier in March, Tiffany Banks came to you with a budget plan, and we are assuming 6760 on a SAT or a per-student basis for funding for next year. With the additional $300 million increase, that fully funds the formula to what the state, the state law should be at 7145, so 7,145. It's about a $2.4 million swing for this district. Want to caution you that we have not built that into our revenue projections quite yet because the governor still retains the authority to withhold these funds over the course of the next 12 months. Many people think he will. So the budget that we will be presenting to you in June will still have the 6760 assumption. We will be watching this closely over the course of the next year. And this may allow us to make adjustments and ready-to-go for the fiscal '27 school year of some additional investments into our staff and to our programs here in the school district. I do not want to get too far out in front of our skis on this because I think there's a lot of unknowns that are still going to become known over the course of the next 12 months that may drive the governor's hand on this. But nevertheless, at this point, on paper, the SAT is funded at 7145. And when we talk about it in budget here in the next couple of weeks, we will make sure you understand what the value proposition of that decision is and then watch how that might change over time. Okay? Student transportation is also fully funded, and that's something that we have built into our projections over time. One thing that did take was a little bit of a, well, the first time ever, the legislature added money to the general, from the general revenue to fund Missouri's private school voucher program. This is the very first time that's ever happened, and this is a shift. And many people think this is in direct violation of the Constitution. I believe there is lots of discussion that will be had on this particular $50 million that went to the school voucher program for the general revenue fund. But nevertheless, it's part of the bill, budget bill that went to the governor. Any questions on budget before we talk about policy? All right. There is a Senate bill, Senate Bill Number 68, that grew over the course of the legislature from its initial filing of about five pages to well over 200 pages by the time it was passed. It included several policy requirements for schools that are discussed in the document that I'm, I'm referring to tonight. Several school safety and emergency preparedness issues that we will be looking at for next year. Emergency operation plans, cardiac emergency response plans, trauma kits, active shooter drills. School safety coordinators must be designated and trained. So there's a variety, there's like six or seven different key points under school safety that the legislation tasks DESI with providing regulations and guidance for. So they're actively working on this and will be presenting the guidance for school districts to implement these safety and preparedness plans over the course of the next year. Most of the timelines for these plans and these mandates regarding school safety, emergency preparedness do not become effective until the '26, '27 school year. We are bringing on a new director of school safety. It's a great time. I'm not sure we told her about this part of it, but maybe we should have. It's a great, it's a good time to have that person on board because they will be piloting us through a lot of these requirements that have come from Senate Bill 68 around school safety. There are several in the school accountability curriculum and assessment piece. Several, I think a couple of which we are actually excited about. For example, a new grade level equivalence metric will be added to our assessments in grades three through eight. Right now, there are, it's, it's four levels. It's going to go to five levels. And one of those levels is going to be grade level equivalents or on target, on, on track to, to know what you should be knowing in that particular grade level. We are supportive of that one. So that is, that is a good one. Reading instruction. I know we've done a lot of work on reading. And one of the parts of Senate Bill 68 is that we must prioritize phonics, and the three cueing systems are prohibited for word decoding. So I look at my experts back there. Are we doing this? They shake their head yes. So that's nothing we're worried about at this point, something we can onboard and, and move forward with. On the student services and operations side, one that we were surprised, was part of Senate Bill 68, but we fully support, is that when we have suspended or expelled students, those students will count towards attendance and funding calculations. This is significant for us because normally when they're not in school and not present because of suspension or expulsions, you can't count them in attendance. Now you'll be able to and account them to, towards your ADA. So this will be, I think, a step in the right direction because our students who aren't with us for behavior reasons, when they're outside of school, we get them into programs, we send their work home, we keep them going. So there, there is learning that's happening, and now we're going to get credit for that. So we appreciate that part of it. One thing that made Dr. Hatfield smile from ear to ear is that substitute teaching limits for retired educators are waived until 2030. So the working after retirement laws extended for another five years. And so we employ several, or will have the opportunity to employ several for next year based on this law that we would not have been able to because it was going to expire next month. So we're excited about that. The two additional pieces, first of all, you, board, right now you have a policy that you accept students, children of, of employees into the district, teaching employees into the district that, without having to pay tuition. This law now allows you to expand that to children of contractors and all employees if you want to. So we're going to have a policy discussion at some point down the road about what you want to do in this area. But state law has changed so that you could allow contractor children, people who work for, for us through a third-party relationship. If they wanted to bring their kids here, we can talk about that if you want to change policy on that. It doesn't mandate your policy change. It puts the opportunity for you to have that policy change. And we're going to discuss that early fall if you wanted to think about doing that. The significant policy change that we need to talk about soon is around electronic devices and cell phones in schools. Senate Bill 68 passed the law, or waiting on the governor's signature, that every, next year, every district must have a policy that restricts the use of personal communication devices. That includes cell phones, smartwatches, and whoever else knows what they're going to come out with between now and then. Pods, ear pods, ear pods as well. The policy must prohibit student use of these devices throughout the school day from opening bell to ending bell, including during class, during meals, hallway transitions, breaks, and study halls. So essentially a total ban on using cell phones in schools. There's exceptions carved out for medical exceptions or special need services and emergencies, which are defined in law as what the emergencies are. The policy must be posted on our website, and it goes into implementation in August. So we have short turnaround time. We're going to be relying on our policy service to get us some language. And I think the training of this, the aspects of this that, that are going to be, feels like the Band-Aid's been ripped off, are going to be with us in August. And we're going to, us and 500 districts across the state are going to be waiting in those waters for a, a total ban. Now, we haven't seen any draft policy language yet. We just know what the law says, and so we're hoping with some draft policy language, you can find a, a middle ground that's going to work for everyone. But right now, going into effect in '25, '26, is the electronic device prohibition from opening bell to ending bell. Lots of work this year. I want to thank, I think, we took a group of students to Jefferson City to engage in some lobbying. I know Ruth Johnson was there on several times, Janet Jones. We reached out to those that were making the rules, making the laws, reaching out to us. We had a great relationship this year with several of our elected officials. And so overall, I think where we ended up, you had to give a little to get a little. Hoping the governor and the legislature makes good on their promise of funding. But as of right now, we are not, we are being conservative in our estimates moving forward. Be happy to try to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you. On to action items now. Ms. Morgan with our pizza and delivery of pizza bid.
It's all about the pizza.
Good evening. Lindsay Morgan, Director of Child Nutrition. I've got two things before you this evening. I'm excited to talk about them. The first one is the pizza bid. As you said, everybody likes pizza. We got bids from four vendors, two from Pizza Hut, two from Domino's for next year's service. In looking at the pricing and reviewing that, we recommend awarding the contract to Flynn Restaurant Group for ninth grade and East Middle, and the Pizza Management Company for Raypack High School, Raypack Academy, and South Middle. They love pizza days. We just finished with elementaries. They were able to do a, have a secondary day lunch day for Pizza Hut, so they really enjoyed that. I enjoy that Pizza Hut meets our child nutrition regulations, so that's a nice aspect of that. The agreement also includes an option of renewal for two additional years based on mutual agreement around future pricing and service. Any questions?
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the bid for pizzas and delivery of pizzas to Flynn Restaurant Group for the ninth grade center and East Middle, and Pizza Management Company for the high school, Raypack Academy, and South Middle.
So moved.
Is our second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So the next one I have is the, we received multiple bids for two Unox brand combi ovens to be installed at Stone Gate and Timber Creek this summer. We had five submittals. After reviewing those, we recommend awarding the contract to Index Restaurant Supply. The preference was given to this Missouri-based company, not only for their competitive pricing, but we've also worked with them before and have already established a relationship with them. The ovens are going to continue in our ability to cook better-looking products. I don't know if you know what a combi is, but it gives you heat and steam depending on what you need. So it just helps improve our quality and cooking capacity for both of those schools. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Is this just a cyclical replacement, or were these a need that occurred during the school year?
They were something that was on board before I came. The process was on board. But the, the idea was, like I said, but bigger capacity for those schools. What the, what they had currently was not big enough for what they were needing.
Thank you.
What kind of service agreements do they have?
Written into the contract was, I believe, a four-year, like, looking at it and then parts as well. It was around that, but they both had parts and installation. It also allowed them, the Unox actual representatives, to come out and do training and help our staff be able to use them correctly.
Okay.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the bid for combi ovens from Index Restaurant Supply in the amount of $42,020.
So moved.
Is our second?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. South Middle School cabling.
Hello. Tonight, I'm recommending a cabling infrastructure upgrade at South Middle School. This upgrade will improve data routing, enhance wireless coverage, and provide the capacity needed for the growing number of connected devices that we have in that building. We conducted a formal RFP process and had three vendors that participated in that. We selected TSI Global Companies based on the pricing recommendations, talking to other districts and people that have used them in the past and their ability to meet the district standards for this project. So we're requesting that the board approve the South Middle School cabling project for TSI Global Companies at a total cost of $84,038.50 with an additional 5% construction contingency to address any unforeseen conditions during installation. Be happy to answer any questions anybody has on that.
Is this a one-time thing, or is this?
Yes. So we're replacing the cable that was installed originally in the building. So, yeah.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the bid for cabling upgrades at South Middle School from TSI Global Companies LL. South Middle School from TSI Global Companies LLC in the amount of eighty-four thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, plus a five percent contingency for any unforeseen circumstances.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Patty? I don't think that she's there. Okay. Onto MacBooks.
MacBooks, MacBooks and iPads. So we're recommending the purchase of Apple devices for use by students and teachers. The MacBook Air and the iPad remain the preferred device for our teachers and students in the one-to-one setting due to reliability, performance, and the iPad for the K-1 students just for ease of use. We have to go with Apple, they're the only person that bid on this because they are a sole source provider, we have to purchase those through Apple as part of their terms of service, you can't go outside of that, so that's why we only have one bid for this particular RFP. So we're requesting the board approve the purchase of one hundred and thirty iPads, one hundred and twenty-six MacBook Air laptops, each with three years of Apple Care from the Apple Corporation at a total cost of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions?
Do we buy them every year? It seems like we're buying them over and over.
Yeah, so we're pretty much on a five-to-six-year cycle with these. These laptops are going to replace the two thousand and seventeen laptops that we have in teachers' hands, so they've had them for five years, some of them more than that, four or five years.
All right, I will entertain a.
Right, is it safe to say that there's a huge initial investment in this, and then now what's coming before the board is an ongoing replacement cycle that allows our teachers and our staff to recycle the oldest ones first in the?
Oh, we're always, yeah, removing the oldest ones first. So the two thousand and seventeen's can't be updated anymore, so we have to get those off of, out of our teachers' hands so that we can update the operating system just for security reasons itself, so they all have to, they all have to come out of the teachers' hands as it is anyway.
My point is, Ms. Kaufman, you're going to see this probably annually, something that's being expended on technology so that we can stay ahead of obsolete equipment.
Yeah, Chromebooks and, Chromebooks and MacBooks and iPads will be ongoing expenses for the one-to-one initiative.
What do you do with the old ones?
So right now, we've been keeping them, so we have lots of them. We've got a surplus RFP actually that was released today. Apple products are actually something that we are valuable to vendors, even older Apple ones. Bless you. That's a good one. So we'll be taking bids during that RFP process, we'll get actually offers from those vendors to come in and actually purchase those devices back from them, from us, and then they'll, lots of times they reuse them overseas, quite often is what they do with the older devices. Within those terms of service for the surplus, just so everybody knows, they have to be wiped, they have Department of Defense level wiping that they have to do to those. We wipe them before we even send them to them as well. They send us certificates, certifications that it's all been done and what's, that's been taken care of, so.
And wiping them means what?
Wiping them means all student data, teacher data, school district data is removed from the device.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one hundred and thirty iPads and one hundred and twenty-six MacBook Air laptops with three years of Apple Care from Apple Inc. for a total cost of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Me.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to, thank you, on to district-wide roof repairs. Mr. Dobson.
Good evening. Thank you. All right, this evening we have several action items to bring for you, one of them, first one being our on-call roofing repairs. Across the district, we maintain about one point four million square foot of roof, that is all a combination of built-up roofs, flat roofs, modified bit roofs, metal roofs, we have a little bit of everything, some single ply as well. With that being said, we do not currently employ a roofer, fully skilled in repair and replacement of every last one of these roofing types. So with that being said, we issue an RFP out to seek bids for labor and materials to repair those just on an on-call basis, just for immediate leak repairs. This is not re-roofs, this is nothing like that, this is only replace, or repairs as needed that we would bring to them, and then a little bit of preventative maintenance as well. So with that being said, we had, I think, six bidders submit for a three-year partnership with that, and then our parent low bidder in front of you was disqualified due to some prevailing wage concerns. With that being said, we'd like to recommend Delta Innovation Services tonight. Happy to answer any questions on that.
So you said this is just for repair, not replacement?
That is correct. Replacements are big, completely separate, and all those projects are designed and brought forth to you.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve entering into a three-year agreement with Delta Innovative Services to provide as-needed roof repair services district-wide.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Onto pest control.
Yes, so we have expired our current RFP as well for our pest control services for the district. We had an extension with our current provider, we decided this year to go back out for public bid. We had several bidders, again on that, four, I believe, was our bid total on that. With that, we are suggesting to move forward with our parent low, myself and the team, and then the child nutrition team, since it does impact both of us highly for the rodents and the pests and the exterior pest control of all the buildings. We evaluated all of those RFPs, and we believe moving forward, the best solution for the district will be Pinnacle Pest Solutions. Happy to answer any questions on that.
They are our current vendor?
They're not our current provider.
They are not?
They are not, no sir.
Have you got feedback from?
Much feedback, yes. They serve us a ton of districts, both on the Missouri and the Kansas side, and had glowing references from all of those.
Do we have a rodent concern?
We do not.
Just checking.
We are required by law, though, to maintain what the state calls an integrated pest management plan, so this would help keep us in compliance with the state regulation for integrated pest management plan for the state of Missouri for public schools. Yep. All proactive.
Good pest is a dead pest.
I'm happy to report, side note, when we did, most of all these vendors did want to do a site survey and a site tour of all the facilities, every last one of them wrote back glowing references of our facilities and understand why our RFP was fairly basic because we don't have any concerns or issues, so it's a big compliment to child nutrition as well on that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that term rodent.
Yep.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid for a three-year agreement for district-wide pest control services from Pinnacle Solutions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Onto my favorite topic, the Integrated Learning House.
Yeah, so, super fun, it is my favorite topic as well. With that being said, we are nearing completion, we have finished up Sheet Rock this last week, sanded and mudded, and everything's complete there. Cabinet installation is this coming Wednesday, and today, crew was able to finish up the interior, or the exterior doors, excuse me, the exterior doors of the facility that were all donated as well, so that was able to be finished up today. Cabinetry next week, we'll move right into painting probably the following week, so it's really starting to come together, we'll be installing flooring before you know it. So with that being said, we have to start working on some furnishings. This was a long, comprehensive process throughout the high school and throughout the last couple months, really, of the school year here, we've been working with the high school design team, so we met with about forty students through about seven groups, about seven different groups all broke out, so each group was assigned a space of the home, both interior and exterior, every bedroom, closet, living room, pantries, bathrooms, every last part of the house was broke down by a student group. They made presentations to the team about all of those different spaces, what some options were, we therefore then gave feedback on those spaces, and then they came back with another round. Through that entire process, they were engaged with Freedom Interiors, our furniture committee, our furniture vendor as well, they integrated with them throughout the last, really, three to four weeks. They did nothing with virtual meetings and in-person meetings, the furniture company would bring out samples, renderings, graphically render all of their selections, and then also with the flooring company as well, making all that, so big shout out to those partners, that was a lot of time investment with them, but really well-served. So with that being said, we have selected our final furnishings, and we'd like to move forward with acceptance on that, and I wasn't able to keep track, my math wasn't able to write down that fast with all the fund and need at this year's gala, but I believe we're fairly close to the fund and need amount at the gala ironically, which is pretty awesome, so. Move forward with that.
Before the, sorry.
I'm just going to say, it's a very impressive building. We toured it with Miley, and she's impressive as well.
Very much so.
Very, she did a very, very good job.
Awesome job.
For the vote on this, I wanted to hone in what Mr. Dobson said about student groups being in charge of each of these areas, doing the planning, the design, the feedback, the, you know, the design thinking process to get us to a point where the foundation then raised the money to fund this part of the project. So it's just, and it's just, that doesn't make you smile, I don't know if you're well today, so, good job.
Thank you.
We should be on sixty minutes.
We have a couple.
You know, going back to the foundation there that night, it was interesting to see the participants, the excitement they had in donating for this cause, so you could see their passion for it as well and approval of it, so we're very, very thankful for them. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the furniture proposal for the Integrated Learning House.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the Career and Technical Education Limited Access Grant. Dr. Barr.
Yes, so the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is providing a Career and Technical Education Limited Access Grant opportunity to local school districts. The purpose of the grant is to remove barriers that students encounters in the areas of skilled technical science. So our district would be using the grant to expand the Heavy Equipment Operators Program and building a classroom space at the actual equipment site. We would be removing barriers, not really for us, we would be removing barriers for surrounding school districts in Cass County by providing additional enrollment slots because our Heavy Equipment Operator Program is going from a half-day this year to, or half-instructor to two full-time instructors, so we're more than doubling our slots that we have. The maximum award is four hundred thousand, and participating districts are required to provide twenty-five percent local funding match, so we would be asking for the entire four hundred thousand for this project, so we'd like approval to submit this grant to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So what would that allow our enrollment numbers to be?
Our, I'm sorry, our numbers?
Yeah, how many students?
Up to forty. And we currently have, last time I checked, thirty-seven slots filled.
Nice.
And they're there all day.
I'm sorry?
They're there all day.
Well, half-days.
Half-days.
So there's an introduction that we did this year, and next year there'll be introduction and advanced.
Excellent. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve applying for the DESI Career and Technical Education Limited Access Grant.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, on to Summer School Application, Dr. Volker.
Hello again. So tonight, we're presenting for your approval the twenty-twenty-five official summer school application. While this application is a little bit confusing, if you see in your information, I promise we are required to submit it in this manner. Pam Steele and I talk about this every year, but we are required to submit this. To be clear, we're continuing to offer a high-quality education, summer school, summer school experience, excuse me. To start, we've got some exciting information. We've already enrolled a record over twenty-six hundred students into our summer school program, this is the highest ever, that's the, kind of the definition of record, I guess, so that's repetitive, but it really is exciting. Think about that, we have thousands of students that are coming for enrichment experiences, to get additional credit opportunities, and some to gain skills that they might not have during the year. That is an incredible feat, and I want to thank our entire staff for putting that together and offering that to our students. So elementary students will attend one of three sites, you'll see listed, Stonegate, Creepmore, or Peculiar, based on their home school, and all six twelve students will attend at Raypack High School. We must list a middle school on their middle school site, they will attend at the high school, but you'll notice that South Middle School is listed as the home building for the middle school students. Summer school run from June second to June twenty-seventh, with no classes on the nineteenth or twentieth, gives us eighteen days of instruction for secondary students and fifteen for elementary students. We do have virtual classes for nine-twelve that are offered in both June and July, as high school students are able to earn two-point-oh credits, or maximum of four classes in the summer. We really do try and limit that, knowing that the summer is a very shortened portion, and if students try and take too many courses in that, often they can struggle or truly not gain all the key skills that are needed if you take too many courses. So we're looking forward to a strong, engaging summer session focused on student growth and academic support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about our summer program.
Do we highly encourage some students to attend that possibly might need that extra enrichment?
There is a highly encouraged list. In fact, I would probably use that term exactly. Yes.
Specifically for math and reading?
They are often specifically for those cases. Some even more general, some is more credit recovery, some are specifically targeted in those two areas. Yes, is the answer to your question.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the summer school application as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have fun with summer school.
We will, it'll be exciting.
All right, School Resource Officer Contract. Dr. Volker, nice to see you again.
Yes, welcome, you know, so glad to be here. Went with the old-fashioned binder, I haven't done the binder in a long time, so that's a transition back. So we value our strong partnerships with the Peculiar Police Department, the Raymore Police Department, and the Cass County Sheriff's Department, all who play a vital role in supporting safety and well-being of our students and staff through the School Resource Officer Program. The proposed agreements are for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, they do include a small daily rate increase, but after review, we believe the new rates are fair and appropriate given the critical services these officers provide in our schools each day. We recommend approval of all three SRO agreements to continue with these important collaborations for the upcoming school year. We'd also like to thank the Board of Education for your continued investment in this program and our SROs, and prioritizing safety and security of our students and staff. We believe this is a key component of that overall safety program, and it is truly appreciated, your support is appreciated in this area.
Can you remind me how many from each group we have, from each organization?
We, at East, we have Cass, Cass County, at the high school, we have City Peculiar, at Academy, and Raypack Academy, we have City Peculiar, City Raymore is our northern elementaries, Cass County is at ninth grade center, Peculiar is at SMS, and then we work with the chiefs from all departments and the Sheriff's Department as well if we need extra support.
Okay, I lost count, so can you just give me a total for you?
Yes, I apologize. Peculiar, we have three, Cass County, we have two, and Raymore, we have one. Is that the?
That's much.
Okay, okay.
What is SMS?
South Middle School.
Oh, okay, I thought you were referring to?
No, not a different department, that officer is placed at South Middle School.
Okay.
And we feel confident in those numbers of people?
I think that as we're bringing on our new Director of Safety and Security, as a part of a comprehensive review, this will be a part of that comprehensive review. I think we want to take a look at the entire safety program. That's one of the exciting things about bringing on a Director of Safety and Security, so we can do a review of all our components.
Excellent.
How often do we bring them in for special events, you know, like graduation, football games, basketball?
Yeah, that's part of the SRO, fairly often, as needed. All our partners are really have done a great job working with us when we